Okay, I've got nine o'clock and I will call to order the December 8th, 2020 meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners. And before we call the roll, I would like to remind everyone to please keep your microphone muted unless you are speaking. If citizens wish to speak, either during the public forum or when the chairman at requests public comment on an item, they must raise their hand so that the meeting host can allow you to speak. And there's a sign on your screen that should indicate as such. So at this time, I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Weath?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Mike, you need to unmute yourself.
Say it.
Okay. Now you can mute back up. We will have a flag salute at this time, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now move to the citizens input portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, limited to three business, three minutes and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Brad, do we have anyone who wishes to speak?
Mr. Commissioner, I do not see any, the one, anyone that wants to speak at this time.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to regular business and we'll start with the consent agenda, which is approval of prior minutes as presented for 11:03, November 10, November 16, November 17, November 20, and November 24, approval of tax rule adjustments as presented, approval of accounts payable and payroll as presented, and approval of public forum agenda as presented. I would ask that we pull the meeting minutes of 11:20 and 11:24 simply I just haven't had an opportunity to review those two. So do any other commissioners have any concerns or whatever? If not, we will approve the agenda with the, with the exception of the minutes of 11:20 and 11:24, and we'll put those on for next week when I've had a chance to review those a little, little quicker. So hearing no objection, the consent agenda will stand approved as amended. We'll move to action items and item number one, which is RFA 267-20 copier replacement with Brad Bowers, Information Technology Director. And good morning, Brad.
Good morning, Commissioners. Celine County Information Technology requested funding in the 2020 Technology Improvement Budget, TIP, so that we could replace three multi-function printer copier devices within, within three different departments in the courthouse. One of those copiers is for the Administrative Resource Center. There is one copier destined for the Appraiser's Office and one copier for the County Attorney's Office. Multi-function printer copier specs were released for bid and the, the table that you have in the RFA illustrates the bid results. And I will just summarize those here today. In the Appraiser's Office, we had three companies that submitted bids for Century Business Systems submitted two bids, Image Quest submitted a bid, and Document 360 submitted the low bid of $4,229, and that was for the Appraiser Department. In the Administrative Resource Department, again, we had three bids. Century Business Systems entered two bids, Image Quest entered one bid, and Document 360 entered a bid that did not meet spec. And the low bid, the low bid for the ARC office was Image Quest for $4,715. The third copier in the County Attorney's Office, again, we had the same three companies bid, Century Business Systems bid two, Image Quest bid one, and Document 360 also submitted a bid that did not meet spec. Century Business System was the low bid for the County Attorney Copier at $4,180. The alternatives for actions is to approve the request as presented by staff, deny the request and send us back to rebid the copiers. The staff recommendation, staff recommends purchasing the Toshiba 4515 AC from Document 360 for $4,229 as they were the low bid for the copier in the Appraiser's Office. Staff recommends purchasing the C8135 from Image Quest for $4,715 as they were the low bid for the Administrative Resource Multi-Function Machine Office Copier. Staff also recommends purchasing the Kiosera 358CI from Century Business Systems for $4,180 as they were the low bid for the County Attorney Office. Under the budget impact, this, this project, the cost of these three machines is $13,124. $20,000 was budgeted for this project in the 2020 TIP budget. And that's my report.
All right. Are there any comments or questions from Commissioners?
Yes, Roger Sparks here. A quick question here, Brad, is the Image Quest 8135 for the ARC Office, is it less of a quality or is it a higher than the 8145 at Adalink of the other two offices?
It is, the, the Adalink, the Adalink, the 81, C8145 in the Appraiser's Office had some, had some specs that were not in the, in the ARC copier. In other words, in the Appraiser's Office, they're going to need to print for some, from some iPads and some devices like that. So they, so as I understood it, the 8145 accommodated that spec where the 8135 does not need that capability for the ARC Office.
Well, do we know why the 8145 for the Appraiser is almost, you know, $800 or so higher than the Attorney's? Is there more devices on it?
I believe it's because of that, of that wireless printing function that, that we specked out for the Appraiser's Office.
Okay, I just.
I believe that's the difference.
Okay. And, and as far as, everything goes as far as being able to get all of the same products to service all threes, if we go out for three different bids to think here, we're going to have three different types of things that we got to support, three different drivers, three different softwares, everything else, would we be better off, and even all the, the supplies that go along with that, would we bitter off looking at down the road of, if all three of these were the same?
Certainly, that makes things easier on, on IT support staff. That, that is, there's no doubt about that. But I think when you're, when you release a competitive bid.
Okay.
I believe that's, that's the difference. Ideally, sure, we'd like, you know, we'd like them all to be one, to, to be one flavor, so to speak.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Brad, I've got a couple myself. The bid price as an example, and the maintenance number is on top of the bid price. Is that correct?
No, the, no, sir, the bid price is separate from the maintenance costs. Each one of these departments today has copiers in them, and these copiers will replace those. And so they're already paying a maintenance cost. The basis for the maintenance costs that I figured in this was 5,000 black and white copies per month and 1,000 color copies per month. That probably is not realistic that, that will reach those numbers, but they were, but I did that for a consistent basis.
Okay, my second, my second question is, did we ask for a package bid? In other words, if, if one company would supply all three units, would we get a better price overall? You know, if they were bidding 5,000, 5,000, 5,000, and could we get a bid of, say, 13,000 if they were able to get all three bids? Have, did we do something like that?
We did not. In this case, we took, we took each individual copier spec requirements and we, and we put that in, in our bid document.
Yeah, that part of it, I would agree with it. They have to have the, the bid spec that they're asking for. But I was just thinking that perhaps we, as, as an alternative, the next time that we could ask them to, if you were to get, you know, Century Business, if they were to get all three units, what would the price be? And then we could compare and see if we need to split it out or see if it is, is a more competitively bid, if, if we do it as a, as a three-part deal or, you know, all together. So, all right. Is there any other questions from Commissioners? I would ask our host if we have any people on the line that wish to reply about this copier replacement project?
Mr. Chairman, no one on the list has raised their hand asking to speak.
All right. This time I would ask for a motion from Commissioner, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bids for copier replacements as presented in RFA 267-20 by staff.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 267-20 copier replacement. Any further comments? If not, I will, I will call on each one of you individually for your vote so that we can determine. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Wees?
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks?
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick?
Aye.
And Commissioner Vidrickson is also aye. That motion carries five zero. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number two, which is a review of amendment number one to Resolution 20-2297, review of Section 8 of the mask mandate with Jason Tiller from our Health Department Director. And good morning, Jason.
Good morning, gentlemen. Waiting on Brad, he's pulling up the presentation right now. All right. So it's been about three weeks since our last update. Next slide, please. So since the 17th, starting as usual with the national update, there've been over 3 million new cases in the U.S. and 35,000 new deaths in the United States. There we go. Next slide, please. Kansas is not doing much better. We've had 51,000 new cases, over 1,000 new hospitalizations, almost 600 new deaths. And, you know, in, in balance to that, we've also had 76,000 negative tests that have been performed. Next slide, please. In the county, though, we have had, we are up to 2,921 total cases. That's a change of 1,100, almost 1,200 cases in the last three weeks. 1,925 are recovered, over 900 that are active. And unfortunately, in the last three weeks, we've also doubled the number of deaths in the county from COVID-19 since our first case and at the end of March. We have about 30 different clusters that we are currently investigating, and they range anywhere from long-term care facilities to businesses to family gatherings to just pretty much the entire gambit. At, at this point, it really, I almost probably should say just Celine County as a cluster since it is everywhere. Hospital is, has also seen a significant spike in the number of hospitalizations they have. Currently, they've got, as of yesterday, 34 inpatient with COVID at the hospital. And you can see there, the latest numbers from KDHE's website as far as how many people we've had tested in the county, those that were negative, and then our monthly percent positive rate is 17.1. Next slide, please. As expected, this line is, is pretty dramatic in its increase. And you can kind of get an idea of the number of cases per day that have been pouring in from the multiple testing locations around the county. The next slide, please, will make this probably a little bit more relevant. You can see in October, we had about 400 cases. Last month, we had three and a half times that many in 30 days. And we're already at now this month about the same amount that we had in October and the first week of December. Next slide, please. And, you know, I, I hope, I don't do this to, as any type of shock or anything like that, but, you know, I think it really needs bearing out that we need to see what this kind of impacts. So I've added in this now deaths per month. November has not been kind to Celine County, both in terms of cases, hospitalizations, and deaths. December is not looking much better to start with. And unfortunately, unless we see significant change in what everyone in this community is doing, which I have seen quite a bit of change now with lots of holiday things that have been either changed to drive-through types of events or to, you know, have been canceled, but that line is probably not going to look much prettier on the, the next time. Next slide, please. You may have heard that there were some changes from the CDC and KDHE in relation to quarantine. CDC's options that they put out involved a 10-day with no testing or a seven-day with testing. And KDHE has adopted those changes, but then they left it up to individual counties whether to stay at a 14-day quarantine, adopt the 10-day quarantine, or, or a seven-day with testing, or all of the above, which you can imagine now has probably, and is creating a little bit of confusion from county to county as far as what's happening with quarantine, especially in, in a county like this where we have lots of people that live and work across county lines. After consulting with our, our medical consultant and with the hospital and staff, we felt that the, the best measure to, to adopt from this was the 10-day quarantine with no symptom development. People still need to monitor themselves for that 14 days. The seven-day was not really best for Celine County, not only in terms of the additional stress on the system for everyone trying to test out at seven days, but the requirement of a PCR test in order to be able to get out of that seven-day quarantine would still end up making most quarantines almost 10 days by the time that those results came back. 10 days was also an oppor, an opportunity as CDC had put it, to help reduce some of the burden on, on people and communities and hopefully to increase compliance with the quarantine measures. Next slide. So with the testing, statewide testing that, that is going on, we have had some coordination taking place with a couple of the vendors. One of them is CRL, and the other one is Well Health for them to expand testing. Excuse me, and I have another meeting with the representative from CRL later today to finalize some details about how that is going to occur here in the county. And then once we have those details, we'll be posting all of that information for the community once it's, it's known. Next slide. So the one thing that everybody wants to know about is when is the vaccine going to be here? And unfortunately, my crystal ball still doesn't work. So we, at this point, the information that we have is mostly just, is the same as what has been published publicly, is that at some point here soon, Kansas will get a little over 20,000 doses. Remember that, that dose number is only for about half that number of people since most of them require a two-dose regimen to start with. Priority populations at this point are healthcare and long-term care facilities. We have registered as a provider. And again, once we have specific details about when and if and how, or I should say, when and how vaccine will become available here, and then how that is going to get out to the public, we'll be publishing that too with, along all of our, our media routes so that we can get that widely distributed. Next slide. All right. It's Christmas time. It is supposed to be a joyous time of year, but it's also a risky time of year right now with COVID everywhere. This is the new campaign from the state, Stop the Spread of Kansas, or Stop the Spread Kansas. The link is down there. There's a lot more information, graphics, and so forth. But bottom line, wear your mask, wash your hands, social distance, and especially during this time right now, avoid large groups. Try to keep it at, you know, your family-sized groups, your immediate family. If you do decide to travel, make sure that you're thinking through your, your travel plans, where you're going, what you can encounter along the way. And then really decide, you know, is, is it probably the best idea right now to go to grandma's house? Or do we set up Zoom or something like that to be able to at least be able to see and spend that time, but not necessarily in that physical capacity during the holidays? Next slide. And in reference to the mask order, again, it only works if everyone does their part. I know I say this over and over again, and sometimes it probably feels monotonous, but it's, it's true. If everybody is doing their part with all of the things that we talk about, then we can help break the cycle. And everybody needs to act like, you know, the potential for COVID is everywhere because it is. So we need, you know, everybody needs to think about what they're doing, where they're going, especially in, as it's cold now, the indoor gatherings, you know, really, really shouldn't be happening. But you need to think through very carefully on whether that is probably the best idea right now. Or more importantly, you know, if, if you feel that there's still some sort of gathering that needs to take place, then think outside the box about how it can be done safely. And that might include, you know, a whole lot of Zoom interactions like we are right now. But bottom line, if we're not all in this, which we're all a part of it, whether we, we want to be or not, it's going to, it's impacting all of us, then this is going to go, continue on for a while. And we need everybody's help to try and reduce the spread. With that, are there any questions?
All right. Are there any Commissioners who wish to respond to the Health Department? I've got a couple of responses here, Jason. I noticed in the paper last week that an individual here in town was having a tough time, so on and so forth, but they mentioned that they had had COVID twice. Do we have any documentation of people that, that are getting it twice?
I would have to double check here in the county if that's happened, but I know that, that has occurred. General consensus right now still, I believe, is that immunity General consensus right now still, I believe, is that immunity from having the disease is still only around ninety days. I know I've seen some other reports talking about longer ones, but I haven't seen anything confirmed yet. So it is still possible after that time period for somebody else to get it a second time.
Okay, also, last week's quarantine announcement regarding quarantine protocols and everything, is that not something that the county has to vote on, even though the directive came from the Health Department? Or does is that just a standalone?
That one is standalone from the local health officer under statute.
Okay.
It's my understanding.
Will we be releasing those cluster locations and so forth, once they're determined?
I am working on trying to put something together by type. I just haven't been able to finalize that yet. Some of that is available on KDHE's website. But we've had so much coming in, I just haven't been able to to fully get that put together so that it would be ready for today yet.
Okay, I understand. Because there are a lot of questions that come forward from the public, you know, as I'm see people why. Which is not too many people right now because I stay at home. Okay, I mean, the proof's in the pudding here, people. I I think the 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 community in general has stepped up their efforts to wear masks and and stay quarant, you know, stay at home and and lay low. There are still those ten percent or whatever that number is that don't wish to abide by that. And people, you are the, you're putting everyone else at peril when you're not wearing a mask because it's spreading it, spreading the the virus, so. Unless anyone has anything else, we'll bring that one to a close then. And we'll move to item number three, which is RFA two six five dash two zero Mercer Liability Insurance Renewal for the Health Department. Again, with Jason Teller.
Good morning again. This is our annual renewal of our Mercer Liability Insurance Policy that provides medical insurance protection for our nurses, our PA and so forth here. This policy and this payment is part of a longstanding longstanding deal with that was made by Kansas Association of Local Health Departments. We are not the only health department that is part of this, and that helps with the cost share and helping keeping that premium amount down. This policy provides up to one million in insurance per incident and three million dollars aggregate. And it's also a requirement of our provision of services. Our current policy expires at the end of the year, and the new policy will take effect on January first. The alternative for actions are to send the staff back for more information or approve the policy as presented. We recommend approving this this RFA and signing the the insurance proposal so that we can continue providing services in the community. The amount for twenty twenty one is six thousand two hundred and twenty six dollars and is covered within our budget under administrative under the administrative part of our budget.
Okay, are there any commissioners who wish to comment or have questions? Brad, do we have any public comment? Anyone who wishes to raise their hand and comment on this RFA?
One question, Chairman.
Beg your pardon?
I have one question.
Go ahead. Hold on, Brad, on the public comment. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, Jason, does this go out for bid or how how is this handled?
We've had this insurance proposal with them for as many years as I've been here and for years before that. So we just, we have continued to renew it every year. As far as the original one, I I don't know if it was ever a bid or or how the original one, other than it was it was part of a called a multi-health department contract originally.
All right, I'll go back to Brad Bowers. Do we have any people on the line that wish to comment from the public on the RFA?
Mr. Chairman, I do not see any hands raised at this time indicating they wish to speak.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask for a motion from a commissioner, please.
Chairman, I move we approve by signature the proposal with Mercer Health and Benefits Insurance Services.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA two six five dash two zero Mercer Liability Insurance Renewal for the Health Department. Are there any further comments or questions? I will ask each individual commissioner, Commissioner White.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sparks.
Yes.
Commissioner Weiss.
Yes.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Hi.
And Commissioner Vidrickson is aye. That motion does carry five to zero. We'll move to item number four, which is RFA two six four dash two zero request letter for the Kansas Department of Transportation with Hannah Stanball, Deputy County Commissioner. Good morning, Hannah.
Good morning, Commissioners. And this is a request for action, but also a little bit of a project update in regards to the radio system project. If you remember, on the twenty second of September, Saline County entered into a contract with Motorola for a new countywide emergency radio communication system. This particular system was designed to be interoperable with the state of Kansas K six system and share core infrastructure that's located right here at the Salina Kansas Highway Patrol Facility. While KDOT was well aware of the system design and they've been involved in the design to ensure that we have that interoperability, they do ask for a formal request letter, which is the request for action today to sign a formal request letter to connect to their system. So your alternatives are to sign the request letter and send it to KDOT or do not sign the request letter. Our recommendation is obviously to sign the request letter. KDOT is, does ask for this formal approval to connect to their system. And the big thing with this is that interoperability and compatibility with the state system being such a critical piece in this entire project. Again, KDOT is very well aware of the infrastructure that is going to be added to their system. They've been heavily involved with the process so far with our project. And so just a little bit more to on the project update piece of it. Since entering into the contract, our staff has been pretty heavily involved with the coordination with Motorola. We've got a core group of people that have been selected to work on the development of a channel layout or talk groups that are associated. And they are coming very close to being complete with that. We have finalized mobile and portable radio equipment counts for the county, and that has been signed off to get delivered. We've also held a detailed design review meeting that was back in mid-November, and what that was was just to go over the complete design of the system as well as the components and review the timeline, not only with the representatives from Motorola, but with all of our key staff. Both vote the city of Salina and Saline County. We have the tower site that is located on the campus of the Kansas Highway Patrol is has gone over a structural survey and it's passed with flying colors, so that's really good news to keep us moving in the right direction. As well as our main dispatch center and our backup dispatch center, they've also been evaluated for the placement of tower equipment there. Our next milestone in the project is going to be the viewing of the entire system setup and before they package it all up and then ship it to Salina to start with installation in early twenty twenty one. So everything is still on track for cut over to a new system. We're excited about it and very happy that we've had a lot of interaction and coordination with staff. And so kind of the the biggest thing, just to look forward, actually, next Tuesday, we've got two pretty large milestones within this project for action that will be coming to the county commission. The first one is, so the county commission had established a public building commission to proceed with selling of bonds for the cost of this project. So next Tuesday, there will be a resolution in front of you that will basically request the public building commission to move forward with the selling of those bonds. And then the other big milestone in this is we had talked about the different options and everything as to the purchase of the radio equipment for the rural fire districts. We went through several different options and actually landed on based off of some advisement of our financial advisor and then coordination with the rural fire districts for the county to consider issuing general obligation bonds for the equipment, the mobile and portable radios for the rural fire districts, and then the rural fire districts would be responsible for the repayment of those bonds. So that request for action will be coming to you next Tuesday as well. So subject to any questions that you have, that's a project update, but then obviously their quest for the signature for the letter for KDOT to be assigned and forwarded to them.
All right, are there any commissioners who wish to comment or have questions? Don't hear any. Brad, are there any public members who wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, no one has raised their hand indicating they would like to speak.
All right, thank you. At this time, then, I would ask for a motion from a commissioner, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept by signature the KDOT letter as presented.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA two six four dash two zero signature request for the Kansas Department of Transportation. And Commissioner, is there any other comments? I will ask for the vote then with Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Sparks.
Aye.
Mr. Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Commissioner Vidrickson is aye also. That motion does pass five to zero. And thank you, Hannah, for that presentation. We'll move to item number five, which is RFA two six six dash two zero Resolution two zero dash twenty three thirteen Consent to City of Salina Industrial Revenue Bonds with Philip Smith Haynes. Says on my thing that you're the deputy county administrator. I wasn't aware that you'd changed positions, but we'll, for now, we're going to leave you as the county administrator. So, good morning, Phil.
Good morning, Commissioners. So earlier this summer, two very significant economic development projects to the community were announced. One of those is the acquisition of the former Phillips Lighting Plant on South Ninth Street by Great Plains Manufacturing for a new line of business that they are intending to pursue. Last night, at the Salina City Commission Meeting, the city commission moved forward with an action to issue industrial revenue bonds in support of that project. Since the project is currently located outside of the city limits of Salina, although they do intend to annex the property next summer, consent of the county commission is required under state law. So the resolution before you today would be to provide that consent. Your options are to adopt the resolution, to approve the issuance of industrial revenue bonds, to deny the approval of the industrial revenue bonds, which would require the city to proceed with annexation prior to issuing the bonds, or to take no action. If you take no action, per state law, that is deemed consent. And the city's Bond Council for their IRBs is on the line today, as well as, I believe, a representative of Great Plains Manufacturing. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer.
All right, are there any commissioners who have any questions? Would the representatives from those two separate organizations wish to speak or offer something? I see one shaking their head no. Okay, I think this goes along with our intent to the the economic development drive that's going on within Salina and Saline County. And for us to get in the way would be a mistake on my way of thinking. So at this time, I would like for other commissioners to either comment or have a question, whatever. Seeing none. Whoop, Mr. Weiss, did you have something?
I was going to concur that it seems like either the alternatives for action, one or three, are going to do the same thing, but if we if we adopt the resolution, I think we as a, as a county show our support for the
And I would agree with that. Brad Bowers, or is there, do we have anyone on the line who wishes to speak to this resolution, this RFA?
Hi, good morning. This is Great Plains. If we could speak, we'd appreciate it.
Yes, you may.
Hello, this is Linda Salem with Great Plains. I I just wanted to express my appreciation to all of you. This is a, an exciting project for us and a kind of a big commitment from Kubota, both Great Plains and the Saline County, Salina, Central Kansas area would not be possible without the help of participation of the county and of the city. I think everyone's going to benefit from this. You know, we've already started to hire people. Some living in the city, some not going to live in the city. And the nice thing about this is it's it's all new work. It's all new employment for the area. It doesn't take away from anything we're doing here. These are all new products coming to us. And in a facility purpose purposely redone for those products. I mean, actually, we wouldn't be able to switch products from an existing ag facility to this, so it shows good growth and, you know, we're working hard on a phase one, but as soon as that's done, there's a phase two and a phase three, so I think you'll you'll find us to be a Great Plains and Kubota to be a solid partner for Central Kansas for a really long time to come and appreciate you all enabling us to have success with our parent company in doing that. Thank you.
I appreciate those comments. It it, this is another piece of the puzzle, as far as I'm concerned, that Salina and Saline County are positioning themselves to really roll forward if we can just get past this COVID nineteen thing. We need to ask our community to to really, you know, settle down and and get this behind us, and the whole community is ready to charge forward. And Great Plains Manufacturing is a major piece to that puzzle, along with several other projects and and manufacturing concerns that are ready to to move forward on some projects, so. At this time, then, I would ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, men and I move we adopt Resolution twenty dash twenty three thirteen as presented.
I second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA two six six dash two zero Resolution twenty dash twenty three thirteen Consent to City of Salina Industrial Revenue Bonds. And is there any other comments? If not, I will ask for the votes and Commissioner White.
Aye.
Mr. Sparks.
Aye.
Mr. Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
Mr. Vidrickson is aye. So that motion does carry five zero, and we thank the the parties that participated in this and look forward to this moving forward. That concludes our action items for today. We'll move into the informational items, and we'll start with item number one, which is the county administrators update. And Phil?
Good morning again, Mr. Chair members of the commission. So I just wanted to make one brief note today. It is time for our next swearing in ceremony. So congratulations to Chairman Vidrickson and Commissioner Sparks and County Clerk Jamie Doss on their reelection, as well as our other elected officials. We have the swearing in scheduled for January eleventh. It will look a little bit different this year, given the COVID situation. We are not planning on having a reception afterwards, as has traditionally been done. And we're discussing whether we might be looking at doing sort of a rolling swearing in so that, you know, a couple of family members are able to come in with each with each person and still limit the number of people. So more more details to come on that, but I just did want to note for all of you and for the public that that will be occurring on January eleventh. And that's all I had for this morning.
All right, we'll move to item number two, which is the commissioner comments. Anyone have anything? I will update you that that I did attend via the virtual meeting with the airport last week, and there are some exciting things that are some exciting things that are getting ready to move forward out there, particularly with the Kansas State Polytechnic of Salina. And they are proposing an eighty seven million dollar plus investment uh to to invest in their their campus out there, uh particularly with buildings, uh moving from nineteen buildings down to five new big ones. Uh their aeronautical thing has just taken off. Uh they don't have any more room for any pilots to to be enrolled in the school at this point. Uh the unmanned uh craft that are that are flying the drones. Uh that that program has taken off. I think Salina, Kansas State, is only one of three in the nation that is undergoing that that uh step, and uh they're looking, it's it's gonna be a huge investment, and uh most of that money will be coming from their endowment funds. But they're gonna be looking for members of our community to step forward with uh financial assistance as well. Uh One Vision, which is the major aircraft uh replacement and uh, you know, reconstruction of of aircraft out there, they are hiring. And they have just signed three contracts with new and different airlines than what they currently have had, so it is really getting ready to take off. Also, on Thursday, um I, along with a member of our Spark Committee, uh Dr. Dirk Hutchinson, attended the Salina Health Education Foundation ribbon cutting for their new mobile unit, and it is quite a unit that the city should be and and everyone here should be proud of. It was money well spent. Uh if you ever get a chance to go by there and take a look at this uh major uh unit uh on wheels, it is quite a thing, and it'll be wonderful for the city of Salina and Saline County. Are there any other Commissioner comments? Any announcements? If not, I would take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn today's meeting, and the real call would be Commissioner White.
Aye.
Mr. Sparks.
Aye.
Mr. Weiss.
Aye.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Aye.
And Commissioner Vidrickson is aye. Uh so we will stand adjourned. Motion passes five zero. Thank you for watching.